Good morning. My name is Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the city council for June 29th. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Paul Masano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Kano is absent. Councilmember Reich is absent.
Probably not.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Present.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison is absent. Goodman.
Present.
President Bender.
Here.
There are nine members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we begin the regular business items on our agenda, I want to acknowledge that we have been joined by members of the community from MIRAC who are here to speak to us about what's happening in the Trump administration's most recent attacks on immigrant families. And I want to say that it is not our typical practice to have public testimony that hasn't been noticed ahead of time at council meetings. And we do that so that we can make sure we're keeping our city business moving and passing the ordinances that we are asked to do. But we are not in a normal time. And with a president that is actively attacking our constituents, one of the acts of resistance that we have available to us as a city is to lift up the voices of our community members and to advocate along with them. So, welcome and thank you for being here and for your leadership. And I'm sorry, I need to move to suspend the rules of the Minneapolis City Council to allow for public testimony. And I believe it'll just be a couple of minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Good morning, council. Thank you for giving us this time. And we appreciate the fact that you've suspended the rules of your normal operations. But as council president has said, we're in a very different time. In some ways, it's a different time. Where MIRAC is here today to say just a couple of brief things to you. We just held a press conference outside where we reiterated the seven principles of our municipal ID proposal to you, which we actually gave you back in April, which talks about the different parts of municipal ID that we want to see enacted. And we're happy to get those to you again if you need them. But as President Bender suggested, family separations, children being separated from their families, does not only happen on the Texas and Arizona border. Every single day in Minneapolis, ICE arrests and separates parents from their children. And I don't know how many of you might consider yourself a person of faith. But if you do, it is likely that you understand that all religions believe in justice, every single one. And I would invite you to really call on those values, not only your faith values, but community values, the values that we all share. And urge you to bring forth for a vote the municipal ID ordinance. Every single one of you that we have spoken to in this administration and in the previous one have said that you support this and you want to see it enacted. We've had dozens of conversations, we've done community meetings together. Every single one of you supports this that we're aware of. And that doesn't happen very often. We understand that you even have an ordinance drafted. It's ready. We understand that there are some limitations around information gathering and retention from the way that our state operates. We understand that there are concerns. But you've got highly competent legal counsel here available to you. And they know what their limitations are. They know what your limitations are. And so we ask you to act within those limitations and pass it now. Pass it now. Pass it now. We cannot wait until September or later. That's what has been reported to us as your timeline. Every single day, families continue to be separated. I'm not sure if you knew this, but at Fort Snelling this year, more than 700 orders for deportation have been issued, more than at any time since 2013. You can reduce those deportations, but you have to bring an ordinance here to be voted on. And you have to pass it. And I don't say this lightly, but I believe you're dragging your feet. And I don't understand why. Our communities are suffering. You know what is happening in our country today. And you have the ability, it's in your power, to change that in the city of Minneapolis. And we urge you to do that. Thank you for giving us this time. We're glad to be working with you. Pass it now. Thank you.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And once again, thank you all so much for your leadership and engagement and for bringing this forward. And it is your job to ask us to do our jobs more quickly so we hear you. And our staff are here who have been leading on this. And I just want to lift up and acknowledge the leadership of councilmember Kano, who's not here, but she has been working on this along with the community for a long time. So, thank you all again. And with that, I will move us toward our agenda for today's meeting. There is one amendment to the agenda that is before us at the council, before each council member. Councilmember Reich will be adding to the introduction of the low, adding to the introduction of ordinances, the low-power vehicle ordinance. And we will be setting a public hearing held at the Transportation and Public Works Committee at its next meeting scheduled for July 10th on 2018. Are there any further amendments from councilmembers? Seeing none, I'll recognize the vice president for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is adopted as amended. Next, we have the minutes of the regular meeting from June 15th. I'll recognize the vice president for a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. That carries and the minutes are accepted. And finally, we have the referrals, petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries and the matters have been referred to their proper committees. The next order of business is the reports from our standing committees, beginning with the committee of the whole and the, we have that separately, and the Race Equity Subcommittee, both chaired by council vice president Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Committee of the whole, we had one item for consideration, and that is a local government amicus brief. The committee met on June 27th, and there was an amicus brief in the city of Minneapolis versus the law enforcement services authorizing the city attorney to provide an amicus curate brief on behalf of the city in the case pending before the Minnesota Supreme Court and the city of Richville versus the Law Enforcement Labor Services, Inc., in support of transparency and accountability of law enforcement. And I move this item to be adopted.
The council vice president has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, presented by the committee chair, councilmember Goodman.
Good morning, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 22 items forward for approval this morning. Items one, two, three, and four are new licenses for businesses around the city. Item five is a change in our mobile food stores ordinance to allow mobile food stores. Item six is a pace clean energy financing project at the North Loop campus on Olson Memorial Highway. Item seven is a license, rental license denial. And item number eight is a demo and removal of a building where there was a fire. Item nine are the liquor license approvals and 10 are the liquor license renewals. There's a lot of them. Four pages so far. Item 11 are the business licenses approvals, 12 are the business license renewals, 13 are the gambling license approvals, and 14 are the gambling license renewals. Item 15 is a rental hall license and 16 are business operating conditions. Item 17 is a license settlement conference. Item number 18 is our local plan and designation for the city's workforce development program. Item 19 is a special, approval of special laws that were passed with the legislature. These are for actually items 19, 20, and 21. Item 22 are the workforce development board appointments. With that, I'd like to move items one through 22 and then make a quick announcement about the upcoming agenda, an upcoming agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Gordon, do you have a comment on one of the items that has been moved?
I did. I wanted to comment briefly on number five.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
This is the mobile food stores ordinance that I was the author of when we originally passed it several years ago, maybe it was 2014. And I know that we were taking a small and careful step to see if we could allow some of these mobile grocery stores to work in the city to address the needs of the food desert. And I'm very supportive of this amendment that's coming forward and appreciate councilmember Schrader for doing it in part and largely in response to the community realizing that we actually need to allow them in more places. So now they will be allowed in more places, regulated, much like food trucks in many ways. But I appreciate that and I'm very supportive of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, councilmember Gordon. And I also want to speak to number five. I just want to thank councilmember Gordon for really starting this issue and I'm very excited to expand this. I know that my community is very excited to have the mobile food mart there in an area that's a, that's a food desert. And I hope that this ordinance helps expand food access across the city.
Thank you both. Councilmember Goodman, did you want to do the announcement?
Thank you. I wanted to note, members, make a notice to members of the council and also of the public that at the next Economic Development and Regulatory Services meeting, we will be having a presentation with a time certain of 2:00 by Michael Coxon, who is the plaintiff's attorney in the Steve Friend's lawsuit. And he is going to be here to talk to us about lessons learned from the litigation, the class action litigation, and what he learned about how we can all work better together to preserve the rights of tenants, as well as things that he could suggest the city could do to ensure that this does not happen again. So I think there would be some interest from members who are not on the committee attending that presentation. Again, it's on the 10th of July at a 2:00 time certain as part of the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I'll note, councilmember Goodman has been doing a huge amount of work behind the scenes to manage each of these situations in a way that best protects tenants. And I look forward to figuring out if there's stuff we can do formally or informally in the future to continue that work. Any further discussion or comments on the EDRS agenda? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, presented by the chair, councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. The Housing Policy Development Committee is coming forward with five items. The first item is passes of an ordinance dealing with the condos at Blaisdell Housing Improvement Area. This will allow the city to participate as a funder of last resort. Second item is a contract with E Recording Partners Network for electronic transmission of loan administration real estate records with Hennepin County. Third item is amending a ground lease with Riverside Homes Housing Project. Fourth item is a release of the Conservation Eastman at 1836 Irving Avenue North. And the fifth item is confirming the mayoral appointment of Andrea Brennan to the Family Housing Fund Board of Directors. I will move all items. I also want to note that I am moving findings of fact for number one. If it's appropriate, I'd like to move that along with this. That should be in front of everyone. That's regarding the condos on Blaisdell. Apparently for that action, it required us to make particular findings. These have been prepared and they are before you now. So I will move the committee report with the additional findings of fact.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report with that motion to adopt findings under item one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. That brings us to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, a report presented by the committee chair, councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward eight items to this meeting. The first is the Public Health Advisory Committee appointment, the council appointment of Jerome Evans, seat 12, Ward 12. Contract amendment. Number two is a contract amendment with AS Medical Solutions for school-based clinic pharmaceutical services. Three is a 50, accepting a $25,000 grant from Clearway, Minnesota for outreach to retailers related to the rollout of the Minneapolis, Mini, excuse me, menthol sales restrictions on August 1st. Four is the grant application to the Minneapolis Pollution Control Agency for the Environmental Assistance Grant Program. And this is specific to reducing the amount of chemical exposure and usage in Minneapolis nail salons. Five is a grant application to the CDC for a REACH grant. Number... Six is contracts with various organizations to fund collaborative safety strategies. Seven is a status report on ketamine use. And eight is the Youth Violence Prevention Executive Committee presentation. That was forwarded without recommendation, but that is because councilmember Gordon will be bringing forward an amendment. So I move approval of these items. And yeah, I'll just say I move approval of these items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Gordon.
Yep, if it's appropriate, I would like to move the amendment for the number eight. This is, has to do with the Youth Violence Prevention Steering Committee, the action. We took this up and when we took up the resolution and we looked at the specifics, there were some inconsistencies with it and even the intentions of staff and what they wanted. So we moved it forward without recommendation to give us an opportunity to work on the language. And so now with the help of the great and fantastic help of the clerk's office, as well as with health department staff, we developed a resolution that meets all the requirements for our resolutions. And the, it's consistent with what the staff was recommending originally. It's actually establishing a Violence Prevention Steering Committee to replace the Youth Violence Prevention Steering Committee. And this will serve as an advisory board to the city council to advise the council and the mayor on all matters related to violence reduction and prevention in Minneapolis. So it's actually expanding the work of this advisory group and it clarifies it. And it's before you now. And I'll move it, I guess, as an amendment to number eight. I think the whole report's before us, so we can figure out how best to deal with that with our expert president running the meeting.
Thank you, councilmember Gordon. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to speak to the Violence Prevention Steering Committee, this readjustment that's happening. It's very, a very exciting development because the city of Minneapolis has been rapidly expanding violence prevention and incorporating various strategies of prevention and intervention. And it started in the health department, but now we've seen it also expand to the city attorney's office with human trafficking and commercial sexual exploitation work. We've seen it also with recast and the coordinator's office. So we're starting to see a lot of trauma work, a lot of violence prevention work that's happening throughout the city. This is a really exciting development because it brings everybody together to the same table to begin coordinating and being intentional across all of the various strategies that are happening across the city enterprise. So this is a very exciting development systemically because it's being intentional about weaving together all the various strategies to make sure, hey, if there's a gap, we're able to address that. And so I just wanted to thank everybody for all the hard work on updating this because this is systems change and it's good work.
Thank you. And may I suggest, councilmember Cunningham, could you just clarify your motion to include item eight as well? So maybe move items one through eight?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move approval of items one through eight with eight's amendment.
Perfect. Is there any other discussion from councilmembers? Seeing none, I do want to just acknowledge that we did have on item number seven, a staff direction related to the Civil Rights Department work on ketamine. And since that time, the mayor's office has also announced a study. So I know that it has been a very difficult week and the mayor's office has been very busy responding to the shooting. But I know there is likely need to coordinate among the different announcements that have been made. And we will need to determine as a body, together with the mayor, the funding for any kinds of external studies that will be coming forward on this issue. But I know that, I appreciate the leadership of councilmember Cunningham. And I know that all of us here on the council are interested in continuing to support this work and making sure that our constituents get answers to their questions that have been raised by this work so far. So with that, is there any other discussion or comment? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll on items one through eight.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report has been adopted. Next, we have the report of the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee, given by the vice chair, councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. The majority of the public safety meeting this week was occupied with public testimony and testimony from city staff about the ketamine report. And I just want to acknowledge and thank everybody who participated in that, members of the public and the city staff who pulled together a status report on short notice and provided us with so much needed information. We did also move three items for your approval this morning. First is a contract amendment with Patricia Helen for continued special event planning, working with MPD to manage our special event staffing. Item number two is a grant application for the U.S. Department of Justice to fund completion of the Body worn Cameras Program, to apply for a grant that would do that. And number three is a contract amendment with Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management for bomb disposal, for our bomb disposal unit. I'll move all items for approval.
Councilmember Fletcher has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I just thank you to councilmember Fletcher for your leadership this week in pulling together a really complex presentation and managing the hearing with very short notice. Any other comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by the chair, councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 18 items today for council consideration. Item one is the 2018 alley renovation program, project approval and assessments. Item two is the sidewalk repair and construction assessments. Item three is a contract amendment with URS for the Niclitt Central Modern Streetcar Environmental Study. Item four is the contract amendment with Rice Lake Construction Group for Fridley Filter Plant Rehabilitation Project. Item five is the contract with Short Elliott Hendrickson for Sanitary and Storm Manhole Inspection Project. Item six is the Mississippi Watership Management Organization grant for old Bassett Creek Tunnel Cleanout. Item seven is a subordinate funding agreement with Metropolitan Council for the Green Line Extension. Item eight is the subordinate funding agreement with the Metropolitan Council for the Green Line Extension and it's a separate action. Item nine is the cooperative agreement with the University of Minnesota for the Eighth Street Southeast Broadway Design. Item 10 is the MOU with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency to reduce particulate matter in the Lowry Bridge area. Item 10 is a memorandum of understanding, or no, item 11 is the affirmation of the right-of-way vacation resolution. Item 12 is the temporary easement acquisition for the Upton Vincent 51st Avenue sanitary reconstruction project. Item 13 is the pedestrian advisory committee appointments. Members are listed. Item 14 is the gift acceptance from Rails to Trails Conservancy for travel-related expenses. Item 15 is the X Games 2018 Large Block Event Permit, and that permit will go from July 19th to July 22nd. Item 16 is the bid for pump station number six boiler project. Item 17 is the bid for Fridley Water Plant Clean Water Basin Rehabilitation Project. And the final item is accepting the low bid for Mid-City Industrial Reconstruction Project. Madam President, I will stand for questions, but I'll move all items.
Thank you. Chair has moved the Transportation and Public Works Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Ways and Means Committee, presented by the chair, councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Chair, the Ways and Means Committee brings forth 10 items for approval. Item number one is the McKnight Foundation Grant for funding related to an energy regulatory policy staff position. Item number two is a contract amendment with Meyer, Scher, and Rock Castle LTD for architect and engineering of record design services. Item number three is a contract amendment with MA Mortenson for construction manager as an advisor services for the new public service building. Item number four is a contract amendment with Pye Consulting and Engineering for building enclosure commissioning services. Item number five is a contract with Architectural Wall Systems LLC for design assistance and unitized envelope systems contractor. Item number six is insurance requirements for public artist projects in the new public service building. Item number seven is a contract amendment with Deloitte Consulting LLP for benefits consulting and actuarial services. Item number eight is a contract amendment with US Bank Eleven for merchant card processing services. Item number nine is the bid for mailing services for the city of Minneapolis. And the final item is an appointed position in the Regulatory Services Department as the Director of Operations and Engagement. And I move approval of all 10 items.
Thank you. Councilmember Worsami has moved the Ways and Means Report.
And the final item is an appointed position in the Regulatory Services Department, the Director of Operations and Engagement, and I move approval of all 10 items.
Thank you. Councilmember Worsami has moved the Ways and Means Report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Zoning and Planning Committee presented by the Committee Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Zoning and Planning Committee has three items for approval today. The first is approving a site plan review at 1319 Penn Avenue North. The second is approving a street and alley vacation for a portion of 26 and 1/2 Avenue Northeast, which is east of University Avenue Northeast. And the final is approving the rezoning of 208 Oliver Avenue South. I'll stand for questions. Move all items for approval.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Zoning and Planning Committee presented by the Committee Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. And the Executive Committee met on June 26, and there was one item to bring forward for adoption, and that is a temporary step increase for principal policy aid position in the Mayor's Office, one referring to the Ways and Means Committee, the temporary salary step for the existing politically-appointed title, principal policy aid in the Mayor's Office, two referring to the Ways and Means Committee, the salary schedule for the position, three referring to the Ways and Means Committee, the acceptance of grant funds to secure in-house management and consulting expertise, and four referring to the Ways and Means Committee, the appropriation of funds to the Mayor's Office. And I will move this item for adoption.
Council Vice President has moved the item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the matter has been referred to the Ways and Means Committee for next cycle. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions. We have one notice of ordinance introduction. Councilmember Gordon gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to be submitted to the voters at the November 6, 2018 election, proposed amendments to Article 7, Section 7.3 of the city charter pertaining to the authority of the mayor to establish, maintain, and command the police department, and giving the mayor and the city council shared authority over the police department. Are there any questions from councilmembers on that notice? And maybe, Councilmember Gordon, I might see if you, this is just a notice of intent, so we would not be taking any action today, but I wondered if, Councilmember Gordon, would you be able to provide just some brief overview of the process that goes into a charter amendment put to the voters? Or if not, we can also just say to colleagues to follow up with you and the clerks after this meeting.
Well, I'm happy to talk about it a little bit. My understanding is, and I did a little bit of work with the clerk about what the timeline might be. We would have had one option to approve this with unanimous consent today, but it felt more appropriate to me to do notice of intent. Then we, so this means it will return to the council on July 20th because we have an off week. And then that will be when we'll have an introduction and referral. That would presumably be referred to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. So we call that introduction, our first reading and referral. I think we, at that time, could also refer to the Charter Commission. Because this is a charter change, the Charter Commission, I think it's by statute, gets the opportunity to review it. Let me just see if I can see what kind of tentative dates we might have for IGR. This could come to the August 1 IGR Committee, for example. My hope is that also this would give time for the Charter Commission to look at it. A big caveat on this is that the Charter Commission can actually take a long time to review this if they so choose. They can take up to 60 days, and then they can even request an extension and take a maximum of 150 days to review it. Just on a note, I've already talked to the Chair of the Charter Commission, and they expressed some understanding and willingness to look at this in an expediated manner. They also have some rules that say they'll have a hearing on any charter change proposal, so they'd have to set up a special meeting to have the hearing on that. And we could also have the hearing at IGR if we wanted to set the hearing on the 20th. That could be on August 1. The earliest probably that the council could take action on this would be August 3. We could act on the recommendation and pass the ordinance at that time. Then, of course, because it's an ordinance that we pass, it would go to the mayor for review. The mayor could sign it or veto it, and then it would have to return to us. A key date in my mind is August 24th. That's when the county says it needs to have all the language so they can print the ballot in time for the November 6 election. I hope everybody's memorized that and took careful notes. But it's all, possibly there could be changes and we could have special meetings. I think the hope is that the Charter Commission would have a chance to look at it, and they'd probably have to have a special meeting in order to submit some language in time. I should also note that all the Charter Commission gets to do is look at the ballot language and suggest, accept it, or suggest an improvement. And then when it gets back to us from them, we can choose either the original language we sent to them or the language that they want to substitute with it. But we don't have to choose their language. And I can try to answer other questions. We also have an outstanding city attorney, and the city clerk's office has my backups. Am I close?
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any questions for staff or Councilmember Gordon? So seeing, oh, Ms. Segal, did you want to?
Oh, yeah. Madam Chair and Councilmember Gordon, that was more or less correct. The Charter Commission can suggest alternate, you know, language for the amendment and send it back, and so then the council can choose at that point. And then the council is responsible for crafting the actual question that goes on the ballot, and there's some, you know, statutory guidance on how that should be phrased.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So to summarize, the council would take action first in three weeks, and that would be a vote to decide whether or not to start the process at all. And then the second time we would take action would be to vote whether or not to put it on the ballot and what the specific question that would go on the ballot will be. And there could be additional steps, but those are the two main decision points that will come before this body. That's not right? Great. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. And I guess my question is directed to Councilmember Gordon. Has there been public engagement or is there a plan for public engagement around this charter amendment?
I think there's been some public engagement, but I can't necessarily say it's been formal or it's been city-led. This is certainly something that's been talked about now for, at least by me, and I know for others, for at least a decade. I've thought about some ways that we could engage the community and make some, do some community engagement. In fact, that was one of the reasons why I thought this notice and then three weeks might be helpful, because there might be some opportunities there. So if somebody's interested in convening a meeting and trying to help organize something, I'd be more than happy to engage in that. It's not properly kind of before the council until after the 20th, however. So in terms of engaging a lot of staff time and effort and energy into all that, that might be a slightly different matter. But in terms of my time and interest being devoted to it, maybe some other councilmembers, it would be there to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? And of course, in the end, the result of the action would be for voters to directly vote and have their voices directly heard on the question. Okay, seeing no other questions, notice is given and no further action is required. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. We have five ordinances being introduced today where notice was provided at the last meeting. First, we have a notice, first, we have a motion by councilmembers Cunningham and Reich to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance to amend Title III related to air pollution and environmental protection, and Title V related to the Building Code, adding and amending regulations, provisions related to material and waste reduction in the demolition and wrecking of residential dwellings, and referring that to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. Is there any, are there any questions from councilmembers on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the subject matter has been referred to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee in the next cycle. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Reich to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance to amend Title 18 related to the traffic code, adding a new chapter to regulate the operation and sharing of low-power vehicles, and referring that to the Transportation and Public Works Committee for a public hearing to be held on July 10. Are there any questions from councilmembers on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, that carries, and the subject matter has been referred to the Transportation and Public Works Committee in the next cycle. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Fletcher to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance to amend Title II related to administration, related to administration, adding regulations addressing the privacy and security of data, and referring that to the Enterprise Committee. Are there any questions from councilmembers on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the subject matter has been referred to the Enterprise Committee in the next cycle. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Goodman to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance to amend Title I related to general provisions, Title 12 related to housing, and Title 13 related to licenses and business regulations, amending provisions related to the qualifications to obtain for, obtain, or maintain a permit or license, and referring those to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. Are there any questions from councilmembers on the motion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, that carries, and the subject matter has been referred to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee in the next cycle. Sorry, my computer is stuck. Finally, we have a motion from Councilmember Goodman to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance to amend Title 20 related to the zoning code, amending provisions related to the qualifications to apply for, obtain, or maintain a permit or license, and referring that to the Zoning and Planning Committee. Any questions from councilmembers? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the subject matter has been referred to the Zoning and Planning Committee in the next cycle. Before we adjourn, I'll see if there are any announcements or comments from councilmembers. Councilmember Ellison.
Madam President, thank you. Just wanted to, as the Elections and Rules Chair, announce that early voting starts today. There has certainly been a lot of, you know, turmoil and turbulence that folks have been feeling across the country with regards to, you know, the electoral power around, yeah, all around the country. And so we have a chance this year to do something about that, and I hope that voters will take advantage of the early voting. And specifically, the Early Vote Center here in Minneapolis, which is going to be operating generally from 8:00 to 4:30 during the week, but make sure that you follow up on the calendar to make sure that the hours are accurate because they can shift day to day. And the Early Vote Center is going to be located at 217 Third Street South, the corner of Third Avenue South and Third Street South, about one block from City Hall. So just wanted to make that as an announcement. Please get out there, vote early. I'll probably vote before the day's out just to, just so I can, you know, walk like I talk. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
And get my sticker, yes.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. And I neglected to give an update on the Race Equity Subcommittee that met earlier this week, and I really just want to, we had two outstanding presentations, one from RECAST, one from a group discussing the Mapping Prejudice Project and the work that they are doing. But I wanted to take this moment to just really thank you, my colleagues, for supporting me in suspending our rules in the line for public testimony, in which resulted in a very emotional, very long council meeting. And members of the community and the family of Thurman Blevins Jr., he came here to express their concerns and feelings and emotions. And so I really want to thank the council for, again, supporting me and allowing the public to, the opportunity to speak and be heard. And I think it was a very wise decision on our part, and I also want to just thank all the community members who showed up and expressed their views as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any further announcements? I do want to then pause and take a moment and just say that we've referenced it in this meeting and addressed it more directly in others, but on Sunday, Thurman Blevins Jr. was killed by the Minneapolis Police Department. And we know that that caused incredible trauma and pain in a community that has been continuously traumatized by police-involved shootings and other racial inequities and racial violence. And I want to thank Mayor Frye for his leadership in this very painful and difficult moment. I know, like all of us, he is heartbroken over the loss of life. He's under an incredible amount of pressure as the elected official who has most direct authority over the police department, and I know he has our support. I want to thank Councilmember Cunningham, whose ward this happened in, and you have just gone so above and beyond in advocating for your community, and it is transformative leadership. I want to thank Councilmembers Ellison and Jenkins and Worsami for your leadership and for bearing the burden of the emotional pain that comes with your increased leadership in this time. And I hope you felt our support and will continue to have the full support of the city council behind each of you.